Okay. Good evening. I would like to call to order the Oregon Board of Education organizational meeting of January 12th, 2021. It is now streaming live on YouTube. I would like to have the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for tonight's moment of silence is for Dennis Weigle, former Clay math teacher, Rita Gravano's former bus driver, Joanne Doherty, former head cook at Star Elementary. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands in, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have the roll call, Mrs. Ruth?
Certainly. Mr. Shea.
Present.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Mulner.
Here.
And I do not see Jeff or Keith. Okay.
Okay. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
I'll move.
Second it. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'd like to move on to the election of the officers. At this time, I would like to take nominations for the board president.
Take a motion to nominate Ms. Carol Mulner.
I will second that. Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Ruth.
All right. Um. Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to take nominations for the vice president.
I nominate Mr. Shea.
I will second that. Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Ruth.
All right. Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mr. Shea.
Yes.
All right.
All right. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to the president, Mrs. Mulner.
Okay. Under new business, we review the board's ethical policy this year. This is taken directly from our policy book. The board believes public education should be conducted in an ethical manner. In addition to state law, the conduct of board members should conform to the code of ethics recommended by the Ohio School Boards Association, which includes the following. It is unethical for a board member to, number one, seek special privileges for personal gain. Number two, personally assume unauthorized authority. Number three, criticize employees publicly. Number four, disclose confidential information. Number five, place the interest of one individual, group, or community above the interest of the entire district. Number six, withhold backs from the superintendent, particularly about the incompetency of an employee. And number seven, announce future action before a proposition has been discussed by the board. And that is to be reviewed and acknowledged annually at the organizational meeting. Moving on to B. We need a motion to adopt a resolution for the continuation of the board's service fund where the 2020 fiscal year is appropriated last November and is provided by Ohio Revised Code, Section 3315.15. I have a motion, please.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
I see legal counsel appointment. It is recommended that we continue using the following legal counsel. Spangler and Nathanson, Dinsmore and Shulow LLC, Ricker and Eckler, McGowan and Markling, and Walter Haverfield. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. We use various lawyers because each one has their own specialty, so we rely on them for whatever we need. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Item D, appointment of standing committees and liaisons. For finance, I have Mr. Zavisky, Mr. Shea, that's the same as last year. Capital improvements in health and safety. Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Zavisky. Policy personnel, Mrs. Mulner, Mrs. Miller. Academic, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Mulner. Legislative liaison, Mr. Shea. Student achievement liaison. Mrs. Miller. Those are the appointments for the coming year. Item E is the date, time, and schedule for regular meetings. Do we wish to stay with the third Tuesday at 6:00? Is that the desire of the group?
That's mine.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And that is the end of the organizational meeting. May I have a motion to conclude that, please?
Don't move.
Second. Question. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
All right. So that's 5:39. P. M. All right.
Mr. Gregory, it's a little early. Should we just continue anyway?
Um, did we say that it was going to follow immediately afterwards? I believe that's what we said. So I say we just move forward. I haven't heard from Mr. Zavisky. So I know Mr. Kennedy will not be here for either of the meetings. I have not heard from Mr. Zavisky, so I say we move forward.
The agenda has a 5:30 start for the second meeting, so I think that applies that as well.
Trying to make sure.
Yep.
We are from home.
Okay. I'm going to call to order the regular virtual meeting of the Oregon Board of Education of January 12th. We have already done the pledge of allegiance, so we will suspend. Moment of silence, we will suspend, but I think we should do the roll call.
All right. Mr. Shea.
Present.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Here.
I need a motion to adapt the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea. And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gregory, I believe you're up.
Yep. Um, really for staff and recognition, Brett's really all about you guys today. January is Board Members Month, so I certainly want to thank you for, for everything you do, your commitment and so forth. You know, I, I put in my board report, I'll talk a little bit later in the meeting, but we have a combined 45 years' experience on our board. And so we're very experienced and even though there's ups and downs and there's disagreements and there's agreements and all those types of things, we've had a really positive functioning board for some time. And, and we just want to recognize all of you for, for your years. Mr. Zavisky has been on the board for 13 years. Mrs. Mulner, you're in year 11. Mr. Shea, year nine. Hard to believe, nine years have gone by. Mrs. Miller, seven, and Mr. Kennedy, five. So I mean, you guys have put your time in for sure and been through a lot of ups and downs within our district. But at the end of the day, I'm super proud to be here and proud to be working with all of you. So, so congratulations and thank you for, for everything you do on behalf of our community. Um. You want me to just move into?
Public participation.
Yeah, public participation. Yeah, really, since we've been remote, we've asked the public to just email me. I do have a couple of emails I'm going to read. I think I posed to you earlier from a couple of community members that, that we know. And, and so I'm going to go ahead and just kind of read what they've had, what they have to say. The first one is from a Sula Point, 3425 Brown Road, Oregon. As you are well aware, I have attended multiple school board meetings in person and I have watched the monthly meetings on Zoom and I am basing my comments on my observations at these meetings. Since it is the start of a new year and the board is reorganizing, I would implore board members to examine their attitudes and behaviors and strive to work together as a team for the good of the district and its students. Observing the verbal and nonverbal interactions at every meeting, it is very apparent there is a division among the ranks. There are two members who really seem concerned, not only about the students, but about board members of the community, about members of the community which they are elected to serve. However, whenever they make a suggestion or a motion, I could predict the other members of the board will oppose the idea. The hostility in their voices and facial expressions comes across loud and clear. I realize and appreciate the fact that it is important to have different points of view, but the blatant anger and hostility apparent on the faces of three members makes me question if it is a different point of view or just opposition to the person presenting the idea. For the last nine months or so, we are hearing the phrase, "We are all in this together" as it relates to the pandemic, but I would like to suggest that it be the mantra of the board for the upcoming year. Thank you. The second I have is from Michael Gavioli, 5041 Seaman Road, Oregon. Entitled, "The wasteful spending of tax dollars by the Oregon City Schools Board and Supervision Must Stop." The following are examples of waste along the suggestions, along with suggestions to prevent it. 2.1, number one, $2.1 million targeted permanent reduction. This was money that would have been spent if the levy had not failed. The Finance Committee should consider this a wake-up call. They should have found this in November of 19 and there would not have been, or there would have been no need for a levy. Suggestion, question, review, and verify the budget. Number two, $6,307 levy cost. Suggestion, the same as number one. Number three, 248,000 retirement pickup benefits for administration supervisors. The performance audit, or suggestion, the performance audit recommended elimination of this in '09. $21,574 in lawyer fees to prepare useless resolutions. Place Keith on the board and rewrite contracts. This pinpoints a lack of attention to detail. Suggestions, review material prior to bids, eliminate meaningless resolutions. This does not include the lawyer fees or the money for the settlement. $7,105 in special meeting costs. Suggestion, combine special and regular meetings. Act as a team and provide direction to the superintendent and treasurer. Pay attention to details. Review and utilize your policy manual. You are not incompetent, but if you do not change, you will be. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. And let's move on to the treasurer's report.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Mulner. Brief review of the true cash increases on the revenue side is completely due to the utility personal property increases, which was a nice, you never know what's going to happen with those, so that was lovely. That accounts for the 6% increase. And our expenses are up, um, as a whole, by 5%. This is a little misleading because the largest impact was for salaries and that's really caused because this month we had three pays in December and last year we had it in January. So that'll wipe itself out or, you know, even itself out next month. Um, we are a little flush. Our, this, with our district switching back and forth between remote learning, hybrid, I think we had, did we even have a month of in-school?
About, yeah, month.
Just about. It's, it's, we're going to have to really study our supply and purchase services budget. It's just, uh, we just aren't using as many supplies and gas, et cetera. So we'll, we'll take a closer look at that and do our best. Um, later in the agenda, there is the bond resolution. I believe I spoke about it in the past. This is a, um, our bond council wrote it, which is one of the attorneys you guys approved tonight, Dinsmore and Shulow. And it would enable Baird and Company to look around and try to get a bid on our $22,450,000 bonds. We had refinanced this back in, the original bond was, I believe, 2004. We refinanced in 2013. We got a very favorable, you know, right around 3.75%. They believe that we can do a little bit better. And so there's no downside to not trying. So that is what the bond, um, resolution is about. In the original estimate, they thought we could save 112,000 a year. I know that's not huge dollars, but it'd be nice to save point anywhere from a quarter or on up on mill in the bond fund, anything we can do to help. So that's going on. A quick notice, and I think Hal and I, I might bug Hal tomorrow to, I'll, I'll draft something and we can get it out to the community. The fee refunds, um, will be, I thought they were done as of 12:31. I found some discrepancies as I was double checking them. So I'll be sending another 30 checks out and some letters. So, but that will be done this week and, but we need to put something out because I'm getting a lot of people, why am I getting this check? And, and I guess people didn't realize we were refunding the fees. So that, we need to do that. Beyond that, the rest of my stuff you can look at. And I do want to thank you guys for serving the Board of Education. It's not always an easy process and we do appreciate your time and energy. So thank you for that. Unless there are questions, that is my report.
You have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to pull from the regular reading consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items. I so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Question. Roll call.
Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And moving on to new business. Item A, board-approved training. We need a motion to approve the attendance of interested board members at the following workshop. Board Leadership Institute on April 23rd and 24th in Columbus and OSBA Northwest Region Spring Conference, March 11th, 2021, allowing for the district to cover registration fees, mileage, meals, and lodging as provided for in board policy, BHBA. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Are they, do you know, Carol, they probably, I don't know if they've let you know that yet. Are we doing that virtually or is that?
It hasn't been decided yet and that Northwest, the Northwest Region one is at Lake this year. But it still hasn't been decided whether it'll be virtual or regular.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Item B, Ohio Education Policy Institute. We need a motion to renew the 2021 OEPI membership in the amount of $1,500. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second. Any, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
And Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Item C, graduating seniors. We need a motion to approve the following for high school graduates pending fulfillment of state and local requirements. Chloe Kethammer, Risa Keel, Rooster Reardon, and Adrienne Marie Vandren. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Mr. Gregory and I attended that graduation. It was very, very nice. Very nice. Any further discussion?
Congratulations.
Yeah. Congratulations. They even wore caps and gowns this year. That was really, it made it feel real. Made it feel real.
Good.
Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Item D, Ohio High School Athletic Association. We need a motion to approve participation in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for grades seven through 12 for the 21-22 school year. Upon taking this action, the Oregon Board of Education is agreeing that our athletic program will be conducted in accordance with the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, interpretations, and divisions of the Ohio High School Athletic Association. This resolution shall remain in effect for the 21-22 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Double.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Okay. I think it was, was it Mrs. Mulner? Or Mrs. Miller? Who seconded it?
Mrs. Miller.
I apologize. That's my fault. And then Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
Okay.
Membership in the Ohio School Boards Association and Related Services and Publications for 2021. We need a motion to approve the following memberships. OSBA membership for 2021, $8,721. School management news subscription electronic, $200. OSBA Legal Assistance Fund, $250. May we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Item F, policy. The following policy has been reviewed and revised and is being presented for the first reading. A recommendation for adoption will be made in February. It's the Independent Educational Evaluations Policy. It has to do with the parent having a right to have a child tested outside of the district and using those testing skills. It is in Word docs if you want to read it. That will be done in February. A donation. I need a motion to accept the following donation. Mr. Tom Truman of TAT Machine and Tool donated a touchpad swim caddy, estimated value of $1,220 to the Clay High School swimming team. May I have a motion to accept it, please?
So moved.
Second. I'll second. Any discussion of sincere thank you for that? Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
And Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Item H, resolution providing for the issuance of not to exceed 22,450,000 school improvement refunding bonds, Series 2021 taxable in certain matters pertaining to therein. There's about an eight-page adoption that we would use. I'm not going to read it. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Ruth covered that in her treasurer's report, so roll call.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item I. It's a resolution to approve and enter into a settlement and release agreement with the classified union. The whole thing is again in the board agenda if someone wishes to read it. May I have a motion to accept it, please?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Gregory, did you want to say anything about that?
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, it's just a, it's kind of a carryover from when we went through the RIPS and kind of, you know, through the legal process, the grievance process and so forth. So we, we worked through this settling agreement with the OPEC leadership. And I think both sides are happy with the outcome and the resolution. So I appreciate the board acting on it tonight.
Thank you. May I have the roll call then, please?
Mrs. Miller. And Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Item J, disposal of equipment and materials. We need a motion to dispose of the following from Clay High School. One Magnavox TV and two Zenith TVs. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Question.
Second.
Discussion. Call.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. This, item K, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the December 15th Agenda for Disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And we move on to superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mulner. Um, just a couple of things, give you some updates of what's going on. You know, we, we started back yesterday, so it's very exciting to get the kids back and see the excitement around the district. So again, I just want to thank you as board members, you know, publicly and thank you for everything you do. You know, we talked about it a little bit earlier, but, you know, we had a couple of those public readings tonight by those two individuals. And I just want to make a comment about the board and how the board works. Unless you sit on a board of education or sit in all the meetings and all the discussions that we do as, you know, leadership with board, you don't understand what really happens. And, and although publicly we've had some disagreements going through COVID about the right pathway to take, it's certainly no different than the rest of the country and beyond about people's opinions. And so I just want to, I guess, reassure our community that, that we have a fully functioning board and I'm, I'm proud to work with all five board members. Even though we don't agree, we do communicate and we do work together and we are getting the business of Oregon City Schools done as it needs to be done, regardless of the process we get there, we're getting there. And, and you know what? Without disagreement, you know, I don't think you'd ever get anywhere. So again, I just want to reassure the public that, that we have a very solid functioning board of education and I'm proud to work with all five of those individuals. Quick COVID update. As of today, we have 4% of our staff out and 2.34% of our students that are either out with COVID or under quarantine protocols. Those numbers are low, but we, we did certainly have an uptick this week. It seems to be that two-week period following the holidays that, that we're seeing with our staff in particular. But, you know, we're here, we're moving forward. We need to continue to encourage our substitutes to, to work with us. And so far, so good. We've been a little short at Clay High School where it seems to have hit the hardest here this last week. But, but one more week, then we're through this, this bubble and those individuals begin to come back. So, so we're excited to get them back. Our Clay wrestling team has been hit pretty hard as of today. A couple hours ago, we have decided to shut down wrestling for two, two weeks. We've had a good majority of students that were either positive or, or exposed and it just got to a point when, when you have 60% of your team out, it's, it's time to shut her down. So, so we will not be holding our Mommy Bay Classic, which was scaled down from 40 teams to six, which was scheduled, but that's not going to obviously happen now because of this situation. So I know there was a lot of disappointment going on there, but, you know, we have to do what we have to do during this tough time. Any questions on just COVID in general and what's happening? You know, I'm so far, you know, we've had a lot of sick folks, but, but our, 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 our staff are rebounding. You know, I mean, they all go through different, I guess, stages and, and, you know, I think I've, I've heard of some more severe cases than I, than I've heard of in the past, but they're all pulling through and doing well. So I'm, I'm, I feel blessed that our staff's at least pulling through and doing well. And we don't have to be dealing with any of the other stuff that you hear about that's going on out there. Vaccine update. Obviously, we're all just crossing our fingers and hoping that those doses get somehow shipped to Lucas County Health Department. And beginning February 1st, the governor's made it very public that he's going to allow educators to begin to receive vaccinations across the state. This next week, those senior citizens 80 and above can, can start getting the vaccinations. So I know many of us who have parents in that category will be trying to get that and help facilitate that happening. And then they're going to scale down from, you know, the 80s to the 70s and then eventually everybody 65 and above. Us as educators around February 1st and also people with the Us as educators around February 1st and also people with disabilities will also be included in those groups. So so fingers crossed that in February, we'll we'll begin to get those vaccinations. We have over 80% that have said yes. I feel very confident that the vast majority of our staff, no matter what they do, are willing to get the vaccination. Right now, the Health Department in Lucas County is using the Moderna, not the Pfizer, because Moderna is the one that can be stored at a, I guess, a a less, a typical refrigeration process, not the minus 95 degrees. So hospitals are dealing with more of the Pfizer and the Health Department's dealing with more of the Moderna, which the Moderna then is a 28 day gap. So you get the first shot, basically a month later, get the second shot. So so again, I feel very proud of our staff. They've all, they've all stepped up and and we're going to have close to probably 500 individuals getting vaccinated just in our our district alone. And that includes substitutes and coaches and and some of the peripheral people, but they're all included as well as the five board members if you choose to elect to get it at the same time. Any questions on the vaccine? Okay, our learning plan, like I said, we started back yesterday with K through six coming back four days a week and seven through 12 hybrid. Smooth sailing the last two days, knock on wood. Very proud of everybody. Lots of big smiles underneath those masks. Teachers are happy, kids are happy to be back. You know, it's funny, we had some seventh graders interviewed yesterday and seven of them with Channel 11. Two of them said, hey, what's your favorite part back? And they said lunch. It was just so funny because, you know, lunch is a time where they get to socialize and be with their be with their friends in a less controlled environment. So it's funny how important lunch is. But I remember back in school, lunch was important to me too and probably most of you as well. So so everybody's coming back. We intend to stay with our plan. I have no dates or timeline set. I think the the next possible change will be going from four days to five days at the K through six. The reason we went four days was to give that Wednesday or give teachers that Wednesday to to work with those quarantine kids that because our quarantine numbers were so high. If we, over the next couple of weeks, start to see the quarantine numbers not go up because the quarantine rules have changed, we do not have to quarantine kids, just the sick kids are going home unless they're within three feet. And so we feel very confident that we'll be able to limit the amount of kids quarantined from the classroom anyways. So if we start to see that that, you know, we don't have a lot of kids out at the K through six level, then then we may just shift that to five days a week. And so it's consistent for for those kids. I don't see us changing out of hybrid anytime soon, certainly not. I guess I don't want to speak in definites, but but the third quarter, it just seems that we'll we'll be hybrid for sure, kind of going through the third quarter. If you just look at the vaccine timelines and pair those up, if we were to get everybody vaccinated by, you know, March, mid-March, well, that's the start of fourth quarter and then we might be able to go back five days, five days a week, which we all want to get there. But I don't want to raise any hopes that we're going to be doing that really anytime quickly. We're going to stay hybrid. We know we can, we can get distance with kids and we know we can keep them safe and and it's going well, at least the first first couple of days. So any questions on kind of our school plan? I appreciate, you know, the last eight months, guys, what we've been through with the plans and the change of plans and the in the, you know, the county mandates and all those things that were going on. It's been, it's been crazy, but but we're getting our, at least with basketball, we're getting basketball games back. You know, this week, I know kids are excited about that and, you know, hopefully get a little bit of normalcy. I also just included some stats just to give you an update on our OCS Digital Academy, just to kind of give you a summary of what's been happening for those families and kids that have elected to stay remote through our digital academy. At the start of this school year, we had in K through eight, 70 kids. That has grown now into the start of the third quarter to 124. So not not significant numbers, but it's steadily climbed from the start of the year to quarter two to quarter three. Nine through 12, the high school, we started the year with 50 kids. We currently have 95 in there. So a total of 219. But but just to give you a perspective, to do some quick math, it's it's 6% of our total population, which is very low compared to some other districts that that have taken advantage of that. So the vast majority of our families want their kids in school or have been a part of their teacher education, whether it's remote, hybrid or now in person. So just some quick updates on the progress of those kids that are in the digital academy. In grades K through eight, 65% of students completed at least 70% of their assigned work in semester one. So again, I don't know what that really means, other than we had to try to define something of what progress is and we had at least 65% of kids making very good progress within the courses. So that's K through K through eight. And then nine through 12, so far, 230 courses have been completed, which is about 120 high school credits. So so again, for what it's worth, we have kids making progress. I mean, we have some that are not. But we have a majority that are. So that's a good thing. Want to just thank Greg Sig, our Assistant Principal and Digital Academy Coordinator for just dealing with emails at all hours of the night and day and especially at transition times. And also Jennifer Conco has really taken over the kind of the coordination of the K through eight group of kids. And we have, you know, a teacher, Karina Hahn, that's working very hard with the K through eight kids. And then we have a high school teacher as well, working with those high school kids. So we're in good shape with our staffing and and everyone stepped up. So any questions on digital academy? And then last but not least, just a couple of real positives I wanted to share with the board. One is, if you remember, we put out an email, Mr. Holcomb was kind of coordinating a GoFundMe, which we typically don't do. But he his heart went out to this family who was struggling with a lot of different situations and and their car died and they needed a car. And they needed a car for one of the the mom, the one of the family members who has cancer to get to and from medical appointments. They didn't have a car. They didn't have any way of getting places. And he set a goal of seven grand. Well, that that goal's been reached and tomorrow they pick up the car, or at least that's the plan as of tonight. So just to break it down, he he sent something out to the Eisenhower parents and 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 got about $2,800 from that group. And then we sent it out to just our staff, not to the district parents, but just our staff and raised another 4,200 by our staff alone. I mean, this was all within like three days. I mean, it wasn't a lot of time. I mean, people stepped up and donated 4,200 bucks internally and 2,800 externally, all within a week's time. And again, you know, it just shows you how how big a hearts that that people have. So so thank you to Mr. Holcomb and and really, we're praying for those that family and and, you know, we'll continue to do whatever we can. And secondly, we had a a winter coat donation to us, which didn't make this board agenda, but it'll make a make the next one of about 30 coats plus from a Clay graduate, Jen Cannon, who is the owner of Maraki Salon, which is that new salon down off of in that Star Plaza down there off of was Wheeling and and Star Avenue. So right down there next to the dance studio. So really want to thank her. She just did it as kind of a grand opening fundraiser that her customers brought in coats. So we donated those, she donated those to the Clay cares closet. And then those individuals here at the high school will disperse across the district because there's some little kid coats as well as big kid coats. So that's my report. You know, we're getting into it. People are smiling, believe it or not, around the schools and and we're working through it. People are are high energy and excited to be back. I mean, it's it just feels like school started all over again on January. So we're very glad to be here. So that's it. Mrs. Mulner, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any old business? Okay, board committee reports. I don't think finance met. Mr. Shea, did Mr. Zadizki call a meeting?
No, we did not have a meeting. No report.
Okay, capital improvement, health and safety, they're not here. Policy, we had the new policy on testing for individuals academic.
No report.
Legislative?
No report at this time.
Okay, student achievement?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, board discussion? I get down to thank the Facet students. They did a really good job on their interviews last night. Made me really proud, made the board proud, made the administration proud. And I'm sure the parents were very proud in addition to the district. So thank you to those young people. I do want to reiterate that board meetings will be virtual until employees are tested and students return. High school people have not returned. So I'm assuming February will still be virtual, but maybe March, we can come back all together. You have to be careful, you know, two of us on this board are old and we don't want it, do we, Mr. Shea?
You were talking about me being old?
Me.
So let's plan on February being virtually yet because we know people won't have their second shot and maybe March, we can come back together.
Hey, oh, I have one question. I apologize for butting in. The Frost Fest, what's the date of that? We probably should get that out there. Isn't it virtual this year?
It's virtual.
I know it's February before.
February 6th, I believe. Just let me double check.
I think that's correct. At seven o'clock, I think, is.
Perfect. Okay, I just didn't want to not put it out there before. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
For bringing that up. Yep, it's a, it's our Oregon Schools Foundation normally has a dinner fundraiser, you know, auction item kind of thing at Michael Center, but obviously this year that's happened. And so they've got a really unique program. Mrs. Hanson, Amy Hanson, who is putting it together, is is excited about the opportunity to to you know, raise some funds on behalf of Oregon City Schools. Basically, what we're asking, there's a silent auction and two to buy raffle tickets. So instead of buying a seat for dinner, you maybe you'll buy two raffle tickets instead of a couples, which are each $50 apiece. And then throughout that hour, we're going to do drawings. They're going to do drawings. And then you have a chance to win prizes throughout that hour. So we want you to be engaged for that hour event online, obviously. So it's very exciting. It's going to be unique.
And the big ticket item is reverse raffle, correct?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that's the big ticket. And then there are other things too. So yes, thank you so much, Mrs. Truth. I'm so glad you brought that up because it occurs before our next meeting.
Yeah, that's the only reason. I was double checking the meeting date and it occurred to me. So thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? Anything else? Executive session?
None for me.
None for me. Next meeting would be Tuesday, the 16th, which is Mardi Gras.
Oh, boy.
Celebration by ourselves in our own houses. So February 16th, six o'clock is what I get.
Six o'clock, okay.
Okay, anything else for the good of the group? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second? Discussion? Roll call.
All right, I'm giving Mrs. Miller the motion, please. Yes or no? Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And then Mrs. Mulner?
Yes, and thank you, everyone. Appreciate you coming and see you in February.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice night.